Thank you and good evening, everyone. And welcome to the City Council Work Session for April 14th, 2000. No, this is Tuesday, April 12th. I have April 14th's agenda in front of me. Tuesday, April, I was reading the wrong agenda. Monday, April 12th, 2010, to talk about tax rate policy and the like. I'm going to have a brief presentation from the City Manager who's assembled some basic data for us to look at, and I'll turn it over to him at this time.
Thank you. The information that was handed out to you was from the mayor.
I'll get to that. The information that I handed out, I'll speak to once he's done.
Yeah. And what we have is probably about 15, 20 minutes of information I'm going to provide you. I was a little unsure as to where we're going with this. So Judy Belanger and I put together some charts that I thought I'd walk you through. So I'll have her hand those around, and we'll send them this way.
There should be four of them here.
They're paper clipped together. Yeah, so they're one package, so just grab one with one paper clip. What I guess I understood this to be is to take a look at historically what's happened with the tax rate and try to compare it to what's happened in the economy and move from there. Let me just go through some of the handouts that I've given to you. The first one is the 10-year CPI history, which is the November to November, which we use for our collective bargaining agreements, and pretty much pushes the budget in terms of how much we have to set aside for wages. And as you're well aware, 84% of the budget, the operating budget, is wages and benefits. So this really pushes the budget to a certain degree. So if you look at the numbers since fiscal year '02 through fiscal year '11, you can see that the average increase during that period of time was 2.82%. And this is how we arrive at the collective bargaining number on an annual basis. The next page, we took and looked at the last fiscal year '05 through fiscal year '10 at the taxes and the average house assessed, a single-family home, and the tax rate as it compares to that. And you can see that in FY '05, the tax rate was $17.17 with an average home value of about $296,000. And you can see the $5,095, and then all the way to fiscal '10, which is an average home is $344,000, at $17.09, or $5,889 for property taxes. This is, if you take a look from FY '05 through FY '10, five-year period, you can see that it's about a 3% average each year on the tax increase. So we put that together for you, and we can come back and talk about these in more detail later on. The next item that I have in front of you is, has a yellow line through its full value tax rate comparison equalized. And you sometimes hear the terminology "equalize value." And what this does is basically bring, the DRA puts together information that brings everybody up to 100% value, so you can compare yourselves apples-to-apples to the other communities. So this is a full value tax rate comparison equalized. And you can see the city of Portsmouth is at $15.24 on an average over, from 2000 through 2008. In 2008, our full value, our full tax value was $15.01. And that compares with the other 12 cities, and we're basically the lowest among the other cities in the state when you equalize all the rates. And the other thing I'd like to draw your attention is, starting in 2000 to 2008, you can see that we've been pretty stable in terms of how our taxes have been. One of the areas, if you look out at the value in 2002, and if you look at the graph below, you see how that spikes up? That was a year that we had a revaluation. We held off revow for a couple of years, and we had, our ratios were down to about 50%. So our ratios were really low, and that's what spiked that up. And so you can see how our tax rate on an equalized value has been over the last few years. And like I said, the average for those years has been $15.24, and you can look at the other communities that we've compared to. Later on, before we leave tonight, I'll give you a whole listing of every community in New Hampshire equalized, and you can see how we stack up with everybody. Then finally, what we did is, this is a chart that we put together on tax rate history. The first box you can see is the tax rate history, and you can see it all the way back to 1999 through fiscal, from tax year 1999 through tax year 2009, which is fiscal year 2010. So when you look at, when we talk about tax year, think of it one year difference than the actual fiscal year. So April of 2010, which is today, we're working on the valuations for fiscal year 2011. You can see that the changes in that first box, and then you go to the second box, you can see the actual tax commitment is larger than the percentage on the tax rate. But that's because you can, our tax rate commitment, that includes new growth. So we're able to keep our tax rate down with the new growth that has been, if you take a look and you look at the valuation increases and just compare them to the tax rate, you can see that they're pretty close. The, you know, so it would be, you know, whenever, if we're talking about a tax rate policy, let's say, an example might be, the City Council wishes to have a tax rate no more than X% of the CPI minus new growth, because you don't want to always penalize yourself, because the new growth helps to offset some of your increase in costs. You basically have the ability to raise more revenue without taxing additionally on your residents. You have that new taxation that comes about to the new revenue. So that, I think, is important, because in those years, you can see we've had, we had some real good years where the tax rate stayed pretty stable, and that's because we had some good new growth in those years. So the red line is the tax rate. The dark line shows the valuations, and something you would expect. As values go up, tax rate comes down. So it's pretty straightforward. Those are the charts that I had, and I thought maybe if the Council wanted to, we could go back to the second chart and start talking about the average single-family tax impact, the 3% over five years, which is really what I've tried to do over the time I've been here, is to make taxes stable and predictable, make the budget stable and predictable, so that we don't have these unusual spikes that other communities are experiencing. And that's one of the reasons we don't have the budget deficits that other communities are experiencing. We've set up the stabilization funds, we've set up those things that allow us to avoid those budget gaps in the existing fiscal years. So if you look at the 2.82% average of the CPI and look at our tax increase of 3% a year, we've done pretty well. One of the things I would have to say is, last year, the City Council, because of the economy, made a concerted effort in keeping the tax rate down. And if it probably would have been 25 cents less if it hadn't been for the loss of state revenue. But we came in at 11 cent increase, which was negligible in terms of what we've done. And I think you've seen in the budget book, I put a chart in there that talks about the last few years and the average tax rate increase. We, you know, we've really tried to stay between 40 and 50 cents a year on the average, and that really comes out to about, at about 3% or a little bit less, depending on the year. Last year, we, again, made a decision, the Council made a decision, that because of the economy, that we wanted to use some of our fund balance to keep the tax rate down. We used that for collective bargaining, and we were able to do that. This year, because of, and as I've indicated in my budget message, because of lost revenues, state lost, state revenues are down, motor vehicle revenues are down, interest income is down, we have that affecting the tax rate. So the tax rate's not just affected by the expenditure side of the budget, it's affected by loss in revenue, those external forces that have reduced our revenue. The things I just mentioned, the, and not only on the revenue side, but the loss in the subsidy from the state as a result of retirement. This is a shift that was unexpected. So we went from 35% subsidy to 30%, then to 25%, and that's about $450,000 over that two-year period. When you add all those things up, when you add all those up, the loss in interest income, the loss in motor vehicles, the loss in state aid, the increase in retirement, you're almost at about 99 cents right there. So if it wasn't for those losses in revenue, we'd still be in the same, almost the same 40 to 50 cents, depending, because we probably would not have, as the City Council had requested. We did drop 2% of the positions citywide. If you, as you went through the budget, you saw that we have reduced 23 positions in the general fund between schools, municipal, and police and fire. In addition, there are two other positions in other funds that we, I felt it was important to reduce in those funds as well because of the 2% request by the City Council. So overall, there are 25 positions within all funds. And so over a two-year period, in fiscal year, in fiscal year '10, we also reduced nine positions, so we had a total of almost 34 positions in those two-year periods. So it's not just the expenditure side, but the revenue side. So, Your Honor, I'd open it up. I guess, I don't, I guess I don't have an idea of how you want to proceed, but I thought this type of information is what I heard you wanted to see, historical data, and that's what I've been able to try to provide you.
Appreciate that. I appreciate that, John, and I do believe, you know, that's my sense as to what people had in mind. I just want to mention one thing, and then we'll open it up. I did provide you with a number of articles, the first of which is a letter from the Center for Retirement Research at Boston College, which is an analysis, four out of five, I believe, or most of them, are about what is happening with state and local pensions, and some of the others are just about the woes. One of the others is about the woes in California and just how it works. The reason I just point that out is, is as we talk about this tax rate issue, and John so aptly points out that, you know, we have two areas that we can't control, one being revenue and the other being, you know, state's reduction of the subsidy with respect to retirement that we're constricted by. And so I just ask people, I don't wish to make these necessarily part of the discussion, but they're interesting reading and they're fairly involved reading, but the whole concept is that we do a great job managing, and even if we do a great job managing, we're still impacted by these significant forces beyond our control, and I'm merely seeking to elucidate that and give you an opportunity to read. With that, you know, I would certainly welcome a beginning of the discussion, perhaps. Council Dwyer would care to give it a go, or anyone, and we can start talking about it. Anyone want to start? Eric, okay, you win.
I wanted to talk about the first two graphs, actually. The first graph is a 10-year history, and the second graph is a five-year history. Now, if we look at just the last five years, you can see on the first graph, the inflation rate, I think, would actually be below 3%.
Right, it's about 2.6.
2.6. And I don't know, I don't have it handy what the family tax impact would be for the previous five years?
Yeah, the real problem we had, there was trying to find the average price. I mean, we could have gone back. It becomes a little difficult to go and try to put that in an average.
I agree with the concept of a stable budgeting, stable tax increases. It makes sense. I just, I'm a little bit hesitant to agree that 3% is the target number.
And I wasn't suggesting that.
I'm not suggesting, saying you are, just by looking at the 10-year history, because it had been, you know, 10 years ago, it had been X, and then the past five years have been rather diminished, and I don't know what the future holds, but I just wanted to mention that.
I think the chart that's really important, if you're going to, because I guess we have to really, we're comparing ourselves sometimes in other parts of the country.
Right.
That's sometimes what we do. But we really should go back to the third chart that I provided you, that really shows how we stack up in this state, because, let's face it, the majority tax in this state is the property tax. It funds county, it funds schools, it funds municipal. So that's really the engine that's driving the ability for people to do things in this state. It's the property tax. It's probably 70% of all taxes raised in New Hampshire from the property tax. And so to look at it in an equalized way, which I thought was important, you look at Portsmouth, I don't like to, I know there are members of the Council that don't really feel we should be comparing ourselves to other communities in New Hampshire, you know, we should stand alone and do what we need to do. And that's true. But I think it's also important to see how we stack up, you know, against those other communities in terms of our tax burden. That was, I think, important.
Counselor Kennedy.
But in order to really appreciate this graph, then we would also need to see what the average property value is for these communities. And I guess, you know, I look at some of these communities on here, and their property value is much less than what our property value is. So when you look at a per-thousand rate, it's kind of skewed. And so I guess one of the reasons I'm not, like, saying, oh, this is the end-all, is because we do not have what the true property value is for some of these places, and so you can't, it's really comparing apples to oranges.
Speak and you shall receive.
There you go.
But I think it's important, we summarize this. This is, bring it to, it brings everybody equalized up to 100%, okay?
And I realize that, but 100% can be very different.
Well, I understand what you're saying, but you have to come, I mean, this is something the DRA does, this is how they try to compare. This is the data that compares us to others. Now, you're right, there could be better data out there. I mean, you could really try to extrapolate more. But I'll pass around to you all the cities and towns in New Hampshire, and it shows the equalized valuations against that. But that's what was extrapolated to get to this chart. And we've highlighted the cities, but you can, you'll see when you get to Portsmouth, that we're 64th in terms of tax burden, number one being the least tax burden, and 240, I don't know how many there are on here, but whatever number is the most tax burden. And that does go into, and you're right, Counselor, but the fact of life is, it's the affordability factor as well. So this equalizes everything, and this is how they determine, you know, on a statewide basis, the, how we stack up with other communities.
Counselor Kennedy, sure.
Do you have a list of that, where we stand? You said we were 64th out of 240?
It's right here on the chart. It says ranking to the right, and you say, and you go, and you go to Portsmouth, it's alpha, it's in alpha, it's not top to bottom. And you can see where Portsmouth is ranking 64th, and you can see where, on tax burden, Newington ranks fifth from the top on least tax burden, and then you can see other, and then what I did is I put Summersworth in, they're 188th, so they have a higher tax burden, and Nashua is 123, Manchester's 107, so on and so forth. And so, for example, Keene is 226 over 147. So in terms of our ability, our tax burden on our residents comparatively, and I mean, you have to have a measure somehow, and how you measure against other people. I mean, I'm sure there's others out there, but this is the one that the state puts out, and the statistics are from the state.
Esther.
So the question I have is, how do we get to the Wentworth location, which seems to be number one?
We, 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 we drop another 20,000 in population.
I do raise out Salem, though. I think Salem is one of the interesting, in terms of numbers, speaking sort of to Esther's, you know, comparative analysis of it. Salem is interesting, because it's 47th, and it has, you know, a fairly hefty population, and it doesn't seem to be in line with the cities. Do you have a thought?
It's a town.
I understand that.
So who would want to live there?
A lot, a lot of people.
Not go there. Well, I certainly would make a qualitative base. That's why I highlighted the cities, to try to be apples-to-apples, because in a lot of towns, for example, there's a whole different level of services.
Exactly.
I mean, you go from here to here.
Well, right, but I pointed a town like that out because it's 40,000 people, give or take.
Right, right, right.
So that's, that's why I raised that issue, but yes. So further discussion. Counselor Dwyer.
Prior to having all these figures, but having, you know, some of the rough information, I wanted to try to look at this in a couple ways, because I think one of the things that is confusing this year is, you know, we hear from some members of the public, pay more, our tax burden is more. I mean, I've certainly had calls from people who were saying, well, I moved here and I was surprised that, you know, I would be happy to pay more as long as we kept this and we did this, we did that. And then, of course, on the other hand, we hear from people who think that we have the highest taxes ever going and they can't afford another cent. So I was trying to make sense for myself of, you know, how to look at these things in a variety of ways. And one thing, one thing I think is interesting is to think of, you know, you take your average house value and your average household income, and you look at the percentage of tax burden on, I know there's no typical homeowner or typical cost, but looking at the average state and local tax burden that we, that we place on that. And so I did a little checking around, you know, with U.S. standards and New Hampshire standards, and that helped me to sort of think about this in two ways. So right now, if we look at our last year's tax burden, and I used a $300,000 average and approximately a $60,000 household income, which is, I know, what we just looked at for sewer, the local state tax burden is 8.5%. Now, that's low compared to U.S. state-local burden, but it's high compared to New Hampshire state-local tax burden, which I think picks up on what Esther was saying, when you factor the properties into it. And so then I, I looked at to say, all right, if we went with the, if we, if we just accepted the manager's budget as it is, and I think none of us are going to, it's a 7-point-whatever increase.
7.4.
If you looked at that way, that would bring us getting close to the national average of local and state tax burden. We still wouldn't be there, but that's why that seems like a fairly large increase. And that on the average, for that kind of, for that level of taxpayer, is about an extra 32 bucks a month, you know, something you could budget for. However, I also have to say into that, and this is why I wanted to kind of help collectively think through that, two other fa, that doesn't seem like a lot, however, two other factors that you kind of have to, I think, take into account to understand whether that feels like a lot or not, three other factors. One is, it is a lot when you compare it to the size of, pattern of increase that people have been used to. So that's one thing I think we do have to pay attention to, because even though in absolute terms, compared to most of the country and even many other places in the state, it's not a lot, it will feel like a lot for people who have not been used to that level of increase. So that's one thing. And the second thing is, we know that next year, just given what we already know about the county, what we already know about retirement, we know that next year is going to be an extra challenging year again in terms of the revenue side, as well as what we'll have to put out. So I feel we need to think about this in terms of where we're going, so that we're not only thinking about it for this year, because it might not actually, in absolute terms, be that much this year. But then we'll have to build on it again next year. And so part of the, part of the thinking for me about tax rate really goes back to what John was saying about stability and predictability. That seems to me, in this, when you get all these factors going, an overriding kind of concern. And I don't, I know, while we don't want to mix this into tax rate, in terms of burden on taxpayer, we'll also be thinking in the background of, you know, going forward, sewer rates that will be going up, so in terms of what that will mean to the basic household. And then another factor, I haven't put all this together yet, but that I am just so conscious of, is how behind we are in infrastructure, and so how much we're making, we're trying to make up in infrastructure, and how important it is not to let ourselves slip, because in, in looking at this and in understanding what some other communities are doing, what they have, the key, I think, we don't want to slip. We don't want to slip in our value, we don't want to slip in our attractiveness, we don't want to slip in our services relative to other communities. And a lot of that has to do with maintaining that infrastructure, and we've been in the catch-up mode for infrastructure. So when I look at things like the, sort of, the average CPI over a 10-year period, I also have to worry about the acceleration that we've been trying to do because of being behind in infrastructure. So that's just throwing a bunch of factors on the table.
That's real helpful, and I'm going to, I rarely do this, but I'm going to just jump in on the heels of that, because I, and then I'm going to continue to recognize people, and just say that, as you look at Portsmouth's number and listening to Chris's understanding of how she was putting together the different variables with which we're dealing, and you note that we're 15.24, and then the next one is Laconia at 17.21. Think about the example of Newington, and why they're so high. They have a really clearly defined, literally a boundary almost, between their economic commercial sector and then their homeowner's sector. If you look at every other town here, I don't have statistics to support this, but I suspect you would see that the ratio of commercial property that we have that's highly valued, that gives us a lot of tax revenue, is far richer than it is in some of these other communities listed on here. And for that very reason, notwithstanding our fine management of our resources, you know, it means that we have that pool of money that in a good economy grants us funds. It's a growth issue, it's also part of how do you finance what it is we're trying to remain and be.
Right.
And I just raised that issue, because I really don't think you can compare too many communities on there in terms of the amount of commercial versus the amount of the private.
But it's also important to recognize, and as those that went to that economics summit with Peter Francis talked about, it feeds on itself. summit with Peter Francis talked about, it feeds on itself, because as you have provided services, quality of life, people do want to come and locate their businesses and live here. So it kind of, it kind of snowballs on itself, even though you, as the mayor said, yes, we do have more commercial industrial type of property that helps offset-
It's a good thing.
And it is a good thing, and, but as you continue to try to maintain your service level, so that you don't get behind, as you said, and so you try to find that balance somewhere.
Right.
Tony?
There's a few points I would like to jump in on, and I'll, I'll jump on the last one just discussed, because you brought up the commercial side of things. And I hear a lot of people talking and comparing the, the tax value and the effect on the average homeowner and things like that, which we should, but we should also consider our businesses and what the tax rate will be.
Yes.
Because while a, what might be a $300 increase to our tax bill will be tens of thousands of dollars of increase to their tax bill, and it's much easier to move a business than it is to have someone to move it from a community. So, and you have competing, as you just outlined, a competing community right next door, which, which may have a much better tax infrastructure for them to relocate into. And so, well, there might be a sentiment, oh, the businesses can take it, they might be able to take it, but then they might move too.
Well, the other thing is, that I think is important to recognize, in most economic development literature, and on what Rank says important for businesses, getting back to predictability and stability, they understand taxes have to go up, and I, but they want to know that the city is not going to do this one year, do this one year, do this, and so, and that the infrastructure will be put in there so that the predictability and stability is there. They, that's top of the list when businesses look to community. And that's why, when they look, they look at the city's bond rating. They say, okay, if you have a double A-plus bond rating, you must have certain policies in place, management policies and financial aspects that are predictable and stable. That's what they want to see.
The second issue I wanted to bring up, I've already forgotten my third.
Yeah, sure, Chris, go ahead.
Is there a way, I, I've also been worried about what Tony just said. Is there an equivalent way that you could help us at some point look at the impact on different classes of businesses, just in order so that we could have a better handle on that?
But that, that goes, and we can try, but that goes to a lot of other factors-
I know, I know.
-that we don't have control over from the state, and how the state, how they're affected through their various taxes that they have to-
But just, just ours, just ours.
Yeah, I, I think we could probably take a look at that.
I think that would be helpful.
Well, we could take a look at different classes.
Well, and, and just maybe we're trying to figure out, maybe, over two-year span, what's the sweet spot where you still get that reinvestment that you want, get that tax revenue that you want, have predictability, and, and does it bear tweaking? I'd counsel Tony, you're still, go ahead.
A couple more points. One is, we've had a discussion about history and things like that, and again, that is good and important. But, and I didn't expect any pair, any materials to be provided today, but what I wanted to talk about is what the economy has done to the ability of people to pay for the tax rate. And the, I, I communicate both a lot locally with different organizations in my job, and, and nationally, and nationally, as we all know, it's devastating. I mean, we're, we seem to be in this, this bubble where, where I, my, anecdotally, I find people are, are making it through okay, or they're not. I mean, and, and the two don't seem to meet, the two don't, don't seem to be in the same household, because some part of the households are furious that we're, we're talking about cuts in certain departments, and other parts are desperate there will be any possibility of a raise in taxes. So it's kind of like that, on average, we're fine, but really, you know, we've got one hand in the fire, one hand in the ice, and then we say, oh, we're on average, we're okay. But it really is a lot different. And then my last point is, getting back to the capital improvements, is, is I think we, what I'm, what I'm looking to look forward to is, is to fund that capital improvement. We want, we're having a tax discussion here tonight, is, and I'll tell you where I stand, is I really want to see us fund that capital improvement. And if we have to kind of pull it out of the discussions about where we are in inflation and, and our, and our tax rate, that might be important, because we are paying the price for years of not funding it correctly. Those are my three points.
Great. Counsel Kennedy?
In, in talking to people and, and listening to them, I find it kind of interesting too, that some of the people making calls, when you really get to talk to them, are really under a lot of pressure themselves, and it's almost community pressure to make the call to us about increased taxes. I actually even had one individual crying on the phone, because things weren't as good at home. So I think, in talking to these individuals, I realized that there's another whole group of taxes that I wish we could get a handle on, and kind of figure out what the average is. And those taxes are potential, the water, sewage, car, registering the car, even down to getting a license for your dog. What are those kinds of, and what kind of burden, in addition to this, are we putting on the homeowners? And what does that look like in, in five to 10 years? I mean, I really think that that needs to be part of almost our CPI, to see what, you know, I agree that we should keep current structures going. I am questioning whether we build new structures until we get it all figured out, because I, I hear people, and not only are we talking about their tax burden on their home, but we're talking about all their other tax burdens. And when you start adding the sewage treatment plant, that's a huge tax burden. And that's going to make all this kind of minimal in comparison. So I wish we could get a figure, and maybe we can, on what does the average person pay in all these taxes? And because my guess is, in registering car, it might be a little higher here. And I could be wrong on that.
No, it's statewide.
No, no, it's statewide.
But even for commu, this, this city?
It's the same, it goes 18, 15, it, it's a new, newest model is 18 mils, next model is, it's, if you go to the portion of the budget, I'll point it out after, but it does show the 18 mils, the 15 mils, 12, it goes all the way down, five model years.
So that's, I saw that, that's a state, that's a thing, okay.
And, and we can do that, and we'll, we'll put that together. And I, I'll have to make an assumption on one or two motor vehicles and that type of thing. But with water and sewer, what we typically will do is we'll look at the, the state has an average 10 units per month for an average household. So we'll, we'll use the state's average, and we'll, we'll do a calculation, we'll get it to you.
But if we, I guess, along with this, right now, we know we're not going to get anything from the state, for the most part, that's done. Really, the unknown for the future we have, that I see, is what the county tax is going to ask of us. We do, that's the one thing that we can't control. The rest of it, we're taking care of it all ourselves now, anyway. So we should be able to forecast what our taxes look like for 10, for the future 10 years, given the only unknown is the county, because we're going to have five-year contracts, so we know what those are. We know what everything else is except for that county tax, because we're no longer dependent on any state resources, right?
And I think that we, we have tried, and that's why we were able to do some of the, the extrapolation for the next three years, that kind of got people concerned. The one thing I would have to say, we, we can put that information together, but I want to get back to what Counsel Dwyer was alluding to, and I, I think this was where she was headed, and correct me if I'm wrong. If, and, and again, we need to sometimes drop back and say, okay, the property tax is the workhorse in this state. In Connecticut, it's sales tax, income tax, and property tax, and et cetera. You can go into different states. If, if you were, as an average family of four, take and look at the tax burden with two, two households that are averaging a certain amount, let's say, 100 and, you know, $25,000 for two people, which may not be unusual in, in Portsmouth, and, and then look at what that same household in Connecticut would be paying in taxes, effective taxes for their income tax, the sales tax, and the like, you would then find that your burden's probably lower. But it's hard to do. And I think, I can put together, just, I just, I didn't think we want to do that, but I think, to get to Counsel Kennedy's point, we can put together the water and sewer and the average mo, the average tax, property tax, plus a motor vehicle, we'll throw, well, we'll have to figure out what the average family has, and then, and then throw that in. And we can, we can come up with that chart.
And, and I'm not just assuming, maybe there's taxes that I don't even, or I haven't even thought of, that a family would have to pay, but what does that balloon?
Well, it's things that we control.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, things you control, I know there's not-
And county is mixed into the whole budget, because we have no choice. They send us the bill, we write the check, we have to send it.
Oh, and I realize that, but now we're in control of so much. It used to be you never knew how much you were going to get from the state. Well, the bottom line is you're not getting anything from the state.
Basically.
It used to be you, you didn't know retirement, well, we know it now. It used to be that we, you know, had all these contracts, we weren't sure of. Well, we kind of got an idea. So I think we can pretty much predict for the next 10 years where we're going to be.
Well, I would, I would just add to that, I don't know how you can if you know that the state is going to not give you nothing, but perhaps take something.
Take more.
That's the wild card for us.
So that, that is a wild card that is not predictable, and that's one of the reasons I passed out those articles.
Like education.
Right. So I passed out those articles for that purpose on the retirement side primarily, but education, as Counsel Dwyer says, is the issue.
And the one thing that really could put a real flying ointment in fiscal year 12 is, the statewide property tax is coming back in, in fiscal year 12. If the state leaves, if the legislature leaves the, the formula alone, we will be in the plus column. If they tweak the formula on free and reduced lunch to save money, which we know they're trying to do desperately, then that puts us into the donor column. So we're, we're watching that, so I understand what you're saying, and it's correct, but if they tweak it one way, it could throw that whole analysis off substantially, but because, as the mayor said, money would then be leaving the city.
Then we even need to know more what we can control.
Right, right, good point. Counsel Hattman?
Yeah, I'll go back and maybe touch on a number of points that have been made that I agree with. But we talk about the historical tax bills that people have paid, and the growth that has taken place over the last five years. I think it's important to point out that those years were a booming economy, and today we have a very difficult economy. To sit and say people are used to 50 cents, to Counsel Dwyer's, their expectation, or their hope at least, is it's a lot less than 50 cents, even though they're used to it from, in the past. And I, and I do think, while the economy may appear to be getting better, there was an interesting article, I mean, I've talked about this before, the middle class in the United States, and a lot of people in Portsmouth, they're suffering, no matter what you say, has had no income growth in the last 10 years. And if you, if you look at it, I think it was after inflation, it was 1% for the entire 10 years, not 1% a year, 1% in 10 years. And today, there was an interesting article, Robert Reich, you all remember him, he was the Secretary of Labor for Bill Clinton. He wrote a big op-ed piece, half a page in the Wall Street Journal, and he says, kind of in a summary, in likelihood therefore it is, therefore it is that as the economy struggles to recover, and today's jobless become to, begin to find work, the median wage will continue to fall. The wages are forecast in the United States not to improve in the private sector. And what we have in the public sector is, we've negotiated labor contracts in good times that provide, in comparison, wildly liberal pay raises, 6, 7% a year, when the average person is getting zero, the person paying the bill is getting zero, and the other person. So, so I, I think while we can talk about this, and it's all very nice, we've got to find a solution to that, because it just can't go on for 10 more years. I mean, it, it just comes crashing in, the taxpayers aren't going to be able to pay.
Counsel Dwyer?
I think Jerry makes a point, so that apart from all this, the longer-term solution is in really trying to look for efficiencies that are related to labor, because, you know, at the, in the public side, because that's what's really been driving our costs. So that's going to be an important thing. But I also want to, you know, a point you made and a point Tony made, and I don't, I don't have a solution for this. My sense is that we have a bivariate economy here, meaning that, you know, we clearly have a portion of our economy that's high-end and going gangbusters, and nobody can tell me different when I go downtown on Saturday night, you know. People are dropping more than this increase on dinner. But we have the other part of the economy. So, you know, we have a, we have, it seems to me, more than some places, an exaggerated kind of bivariate economy, which is very difficult for us to figure out in, in our, you know, given how little control we have over things that we would want to do, like maybe put in some other kinds of stabilization things from an income, which we don't have the power to do from our state. But that, that's a very puzzling problem to me, because, and I think that's why we get this schizophrenic kind of view that people are having.
Well, if you go to public area, you have people begging not to rate, have taxes go up, and other people are saying they're going to pay more, they're willing to pay more.
Exactly.
And there is, but my, but I think there's a lot of articles being written that government is pricing itself out of business.
Yes.
And we've got to address that problem.
Yes.
I mean, even, at some point, even the people would-
Sure.
Doing well off.
Yeah.
And it, it's, it's about, we, we talk about, let me just finish, everybody wants to raise their hand. We talk about eliminating services, and I don't, and nobody wants to eliminate services, but we've got to look at the cost of providing those services. We've got to find productivity improvements, or something, restructurings, or something, because we just can't let the service, cost of services go up 7% a year.
And I don't disagree with that, but the thing is, if we, if you look at the budgets, you know, we're looking at a, we're looking at the, the micro view here in Portsmouth, you know, you, you have valid points on the macro view. I mean, we're in an 87 million dollar general fund budget. Over the last two years, we've dropped 34 positions. We've now moved things around. Next year, you've asked us to do another 20 positions. So, well, yeah, we are in that restructuring mode. And, and certainly we'll see, the proof will be in the pudding when we go through this budget, and some recommendations are made, and there are people that want certain, certain services that are, that are recommended to be eliminated, and some that want services to be expanded, and some that want them to be cut back. So we only have, I mean, at some point, though, then you cross over, and I think you end up with diminishing returns as a community, because property values are important to me. You know, people come and live, and as I said, businesses do want predictable and stable taxes. They also want the ability for their employees to have quality of life as well. That's what's been attractive for Portsmouth. So I guess what we have to find is where, we don't want to cross that line when we end up with diminishing returns.
I'm not sure we know where the line is on quality of life.
Well, exactly, exactly.
So we may be able to move down a little bit and not notice.
Possibly. Counsel Schmidt?
Thank you. Pardon me. The, it's, it, it does come down to how we deliver the services that we have. And we have to, as we said, as I said in our very first budget meeting this year, we have to rethink how we do government. We have to rethink how we're providing the services, because a lot of people in this community do not want the services to go away. They enjoy the services they have, that's why they live here. But at the same time, we have to be careful that we don't fall into the hole that we did within the infrastructure issues that we had from unfunding from years, years prior. And I, and I think coming up with a stable way of keeping taxes, but without a tax cap. I think if you start putting in tax caps, you look at what Dover's going through now, you start seeing tax caps going in, and you put in a tax cap, but a contractual obligation could immediately blow away the tax cap, and you have nothing going on, and you're forced to cut services. And I don't think anyone's looking for that. I know there was a group last year that wanted us to start looking at a tax cap, and we came in at less than what they wanted to do. So why would we want to do that? But it, it's, it's important that we, we start rethinking how we're doing government. I know we have a new committee that's starting up, I'm looking forward to serving on that, but it's just a start. And when we're going through this budget process, to speak a little on that, I think it's also important for everybody who calls us up and says, please vote this way, or please vote that way, that they also have another side of the, the other side of the page, as it were, to tell us. So in other words, if you're going, if we're going to vote to increase someone's budget, give us the reasons on how we can take it away from somebody else's. Because if we continue on, on the, what this particular budget is coming up with, which, right now, it's, it's proposed a $1.28 increase, that's just unsustainable for anyone in the community. And, you know, and for all of those who said, well, I, I would be more than happy to, to pay more in taxes. Well, you know, that's, that's a good, good way to write, stand out and write a check to your PTA, PTO, and to other, writing checks to the library, writing checks to the other funds that are around here, and help offset the cost that way too. But I'm glad we're going through this process of finding a way, and I think, and I'm, not to summarize for everybody here, but I think we're all in agreement that we have to come up with a, a way of keeping the tax rate at a very predictable level. And, you know, you, you look at the 10-year average on here, that first year of the 10-year that we're looking at was 4.58. When that year falls off, of course, I don't know what 12 will be, you know that 2.82 is going to drop down considerably. That also affects all the contracts that we're dealing with as well.
Thanks. I'll just chime in as I see no hand up, and I, I so rarely get a chance to talk. It is that, I, I go back to the 15.24 that we have, $15.24, and I, and I think about Tony's comments and others about infrastructure, and obviously, I support the idea of keeping the infrastructure strong and the predictability strong. I agree with all of those terms. I agree with all of those terms, and certainly, we don't want to sell our stock down, and I perhaps may disagree with Councilor Kennedy to some degree, to say, you know, that economic development that we have, has had, has done nothing but save people money, in terms of homeowners, and I don't think there's any evidence to support the contrary argument. But, in going forward, taking into consideration everyone's remarks, Jerry's remarks about public sector, you know, labor costs so far out of whack with economic, you know, reality otherwise, is if we're looking at, just to return to the statewide property tax, nothing else, and we lose that school lunch money, or such as it is, or that's where we get, where we lose, that predictability is going to eat, we may be able to maintain that predictability if we quote-unquote set it as a goal, query should we, and this, in this two-year swing, if it's, there's a significant chance that the demands on us from the state because of their inability to fund us are going to make the pressure on us so much greater, that that is the concern, and I wonder, how much do we need to do in this year to protect ourselves for next year? If we all hold hands and hope that it holds, you know, I like to believe that the commercial infrastructure of Portsmouth, the strongest in New Hampshire, no doubt, will percolate at a higher rate and recover at a faster rate. I truly do believe that, but I don't know if that's enough to cover our bets, and so I'm a little concerned. And because of that, I'm concerned that we can't be too, we can't be too placid about this year, just because of what I'm concerned will happen with the state.
And building on that, is I, and I appreciate the term, the concept of having a soft landing that John often mentions. At the same token, what's competing against that are compounding interest, and I mentioned it at the, at the press release for the, for the budget on Friday, is that there may be some sense to, oh, you know, we might make it through this, let's try to keep this program or that at a budget, but we've lost that money in compounding interest in future years. So, really, like you said, we can't be, we can't sit back on that.
This is Mayor Clayber again, Jerry.
I guess what, I like this discussion, but what I was thinking when I knew about this meeting tonight was trying to come up with a figure, you know, like right now it's at 1.28 from the city manager. So, what I was doing was thinking, let's say it was 75 cents per thousand, and you have a $300,000 house, it comes out to $18.75, 75 cents more per month. If it's 50 cents per thousand and you have a $300,000 house, it comes out to $12.50 per month increase in your taxes. So, I was, I was hoping we could come to some kind of a range of how much we thought people in Portsmouth could afford, and I don't know if you have an opinion on that, where you've been working so closely. What do you think the average Portsmouth resident could absorb this year in a tax increase? I mean, maybe that's not fair to ask you that question, but you're like, so, your head is inside of this book, you know?
Well, the thing I would have to say is, again, predictable and stable, and if you go back to that, I think it's, it has been between 40 and 50 cents, and, but there are those that feel that even that would be too high. But, I want to say that I believe that if it gets too low, you're really crossing over and having the diminishing returns. Because values, you're not going to see it this year or next year, but one thing you have to realize, when you look at these numbers and show our equalized values, it's almost looking at your home as a, you know, as a, the ability of being able to maintain that value, as opposed to, you know, 10 years from now, how much will that home will be worth. You hope that we will be continuing to lead the state in terms of values on our homes. And I know we have the assessor here tonight, and, and we talked about this, about our values, and our values have held very well. And we'll see during the revale how, you know, there's some areas of town that are going to have some adjustments, but she's done a great job of keeping our ratios in place. So, now when you start going and you start having a situation where you now cross over, you may not see it in the first year, second year, third year, fourth year, but maybe seventh year out, you might see those. So, I would have to say that I'd be very concerned. I would personally, I think if the council could continue with a predictable and stable rate of, you know, that would be very helpful. That goes near the rate of inflation, maybe slightly above, because you have to remember, we're losing the revenue on the state's side. We're having a major revenue dislocation right now, that we never had before. I mean, on the one hand, we had, we had new growth going, which was fine, and this year we have limited new growth. In fact, we did not include any new growth in your budget this year. Right now, I'm working, because we wanted to be very careful with that, and I'm working with the finance director and the assessor, and maybe towards the end of April, we may come up with a number to say, this is what we believe is new growth in the community, and we can use that to offset some of the taxes. Does everybody follow that? So, let's say we have enough new growth that might be able to reduce the tax rate by 20 cents or something, I don't know. But, we're working on it. We don't want to throw that number out, you know, because April 1 was the date, and we wanted to make sure that we got all our data, so we'll have that to you later on. And I don't think it's going to be anything spectacular, but I think it's something that we want to at least put into the mix as part of it. I don't think I answered that question, but I tried.
I was just thinking, as you mentioned, development, you talked about development during the middle school project, as we're bonding that, I was thinking, gee, isn't it nice, the Portwalk project is coming, and the Weston Convention Center project is coming, and that'll pay a big part of the tax bill that will be created by the bonding of this middle school. And when those projects went away, this just hits the, all we have is one little piece of Portwalk. So, I'm just pointing that out, how fragile this is and how difficult it is to predict what's going to happen.
Yeah.
Nancy, you had a follow-up?
I just have a basic question. In trying to figure out the budget, is it possible to say a penny is, like if the tax rate goes up one cent per thousand, how much is that?
$38,000.
Oh, okay.
One cent is $38,000, 10 cents $380,000, a dollar is $3.8 million.
Eric, then Christine.
I know the, the city manager from time to time, since I've been here shortly, has mentioned these council policies, and as counselors, we haven't really talked about them, at least in the recent history that I've been here, but I just wanted, in this case, to speak up as one counselor and think about four budgeting policies that I think we have been following, and I just want to mention, it's a good thing to follow them. I mean, it might be redundant, but I just want to say that, and one of them we have touched on is maintaining your infrastructure and rebuilding your infrastructure, and I think capital spending should be protected. Now, we can have a discussion about what the right balance is, I mean, it's very hard to play catch-up when we're also losing operating funds, but I do think we shouldn't gut it completely. Another one is to never overestimate your revenues, and I think the city manager's done a great job of, and some cities do get into trouble when, you know, it's going to be a good times, I know it, I can feel it, but we don't do that, and I think it's something that, as a council, that's a good thing, too. Or underestimating your expenses. This will be a warm year, there's not going to be any snow this year, trust me. But I think, yeah, so, you know, that's another easy, easy thing that we don't do. And then dipping into your, your fund balance for your operating, I think, is also something we try to avoid, and I think that is why, even though we're in a tough situation, we're not as tough as we could be. So, I don't know, I've never voted on any of those philosophies, but I think they're good philosophies for us to have, and I just wanted to say that the city manager's done a good job of doing those things.
Thank you. Councilor Dwyer?
This last conversation actually is helping to think about sort of a position on this bivariat issue. If any, if the last two years and the financial crisis has shown us anything, it shows us that confidence is such a big part of all of this, and it's so much of, it is about confidence. And, so we want to make sure that the growth sector has confidence in us. Now, that may, that may be some harsh decisions, but that the people who are going to help us grow have confidence in what we are. I mean, to me, that's really important. So, it is important that, what Tony brought up at the beginning, that the people who are going to develop here, and you know, Jerry just gave her examples, the people who are going to develop property here have confidence in what we're doing, that they want to bring their employees here, that they want, they see that we have infrastructure, that it's safe, all these things, because that's, that's an engine. The other kind of engine, you know, whatever you think of, high-end condos or whatever, that's a growth industry here. So, we want to make sure that the people who are buying, who are investing a million dollars in a place where they're going to spend a little time have confidence, because those are growth sectors. And it reminds me, I have a friend in Portland who's a real estate agent, who called me last week and said, you know, I just got a million-dollar sale because what you haven't done with your middle school. And he had a executive relocating from overseas, they had picked Portsmouth as the place that they wanted to be, they were ready to buy a high-end house, they visited here, and went to the middle school and said, no way, a community that doesn't, has this kind of middle school, that says to us, we can't be here. And, you know, the next week bought a high-end house in Portland. Though that's just a little anecdote, but it helps me to think of anecdotes like that. Not that we want everyone in the community to be like that, but we need to make sure that we are not giving the wrong signals to the, to the sectors that will help us grow our way out of this, because that's been our edge in the past, that we have had that growth. So, we need to make sure that we're giving the right signals while we're balancing off the rest of it.
You know, I, we all talk about balance, and we're going to be trying to figure that out, and I don't know in terms of what the assistant mayor requests, I'm certainly not ready to pick a number until I hear the evidence, so to speak. And we have those cases coming up to be presented to us over the next month or so. But I, in following on with what Christine said, I can perhaps better articulate what I, what I'm trying to think about, and that is, if we inspire confidence by significant maintained infrastructure investment, I can handle a little bit of, more of a reduction in operating.
Right.
In the first instance, over a couple of years. I don't philosophically want to do that forever, but you can send the message of confidence to say, we're going to continue to maintain that infrastructure, we're going to build that middle school, we're going to look at our recreational infrastructure, we're going to look at our, our business infrastructure, because that business, that's why our tax rate's low. And so, you know, if it's a window where the state is putting us in a position, not the state itself, but the pressures on all governments are putting us in a position where operating is challenged and labor costs have been challenged, but we're able to maintain that infrastructure investment, I am inclined, have to hear the evidence, have to hear what people have to say, to say, I'm going to look real hard on the operating side, not that any of it's waste, not that one penny of it's waste, it's great stuff, it's just a question of how much you can afford, versus what's the maintaining of that confidence level in our community, because in the longer term, I wonder which is going to benefit us. Councilor Spear?
Thank you. Now, I do want to, when this was first proposed, we were going to give people, I guess as the assistant mayor was saying, an opportunity to see what are our expectations in terms of tax bill for the next couple of years, three years. So, I'll just explain my philosophy, and again, this isn't an actual number here, how many dollars or cents, but philosophically, I'm looking at a couple of things here. The, the 10-year rate, I think as, can't remember who said it, but as the FY02 drops off and the next, we're looking at a lower rate on average going forward. And so, we're also looking, staring down the pike at the, we've touched on it, but the sewer bill was going to go up by a thousand bucks for, you know, that's huge. That's, that's, or more, depending on what, what people demand of us. And then, of course, the conquered things that we all know about. So, to me, I would like to, I know, I know either way there's going to be a problem, but I'd like to err on the side of a lower tax burden in the next couple of years, more in line with inflation, which truthfully is kind of where the red line here is. And, like, we were talking about a soft landing, not only for the government's services, but also for the taxpayer who's going to be hit with a large, maybe a sudden tax bill, or sewer fee, which in the end is still money. So, I think we have to think about preparing the taxpayers for that eventuality by keeping the tax rate this year and the next year. People want to know where I stand on it. Philosophically, I want to see it more in tune with that, with what people can afford to pay. And I guess inflation, to me, is kind of a proxy for your paycheck, in a way. And if your paycheck, well, I don't know, I'm shaking a shaking head, no, so...
Well, not right now. I mean, it might have been in the past, but right now, it's really difficult to...
Well, it is, and one of the hard things we have in this community, of course, is the property tax is rather arbitrary measure of your ability to pay here.
For sure.
And it's very, it's very challenging, so I agree with that. But anyway, I did just want to mention where I'm coming from in terms of my approach to this, and I think I still, the discussions we're going to have the next month are still important in terms of ranking priorities, but to me, that's...
Right.
My philosophy is, I'm going to see what we can afford, and then I'll see how we prioritize where we spend it, is kind of where I'm going.
Councilor Dwyer?
Well, you know, I was thinking, Eric, along sort of the same lines of trying to think about, you know, an average 10-year inflation rate, you know, just take the median here, if you drop off the 4.58, it's 2.52. Taking something like that, plus a premium for acceleration on infrastructure. I mean, something sort of in my head, which brings you to about, you know, half of the increase that is proposed. I mean, that, I think that's one way to think of it, and I think that's coming very close to what you had just said, but coming at it from a slightly different approach.
Well, folks, it's kind of nice to have the, this broad-based economic discussion about our direction and our understanding of what the past has been, because what would happen is, without having had this discussion, people would not have this bit of information in their mind as to term to what the community trajectory is, from a tax rate, from an economic standpoint is, and I, and I think it's helpful that we do that. I don't know, and I'll certainly entertain from the chair, as we, as we've all had an opportunity to speak our piece fairly, fairly, in a fairly involved fashion, people have indicated what their concerns and what their bents are, and it's pretty esoteric balancing of governmental interests when you really get down to what we've just been talking about. And we may have a feel as to where we're going, I think to come up with a number at this point in time is perhaps premature, but others may disagree, and I certainly would want to hear anymore about anything else people would like to get out of this work session. So, Councilor Kennedy, then Councilor Dwyer.
I mean, I think ultimately, I understand about the million-dollar house that Councilor Dwyer was talking about, but ultimately, I want to keep my neighbors. Ultimately, I want to keep the, the older individual who might be living in the million-dollar house but bought it when it was $10,000. I want to keep the young family who have struggled and have lived here all their life, and with family support and everyone, they were able to buy their grandparents' house and live there with their children, but yet, things are really hard. So, I commend us thinking about big business, I commend us thinking about the high-end things that are out there. But, I think ultimately, what makes Portsmouth is the people that are living in it. And what I'm hearing from the people living in it right now, that things are tough, they're uncertain about their own economic situation in their, their own purses, uncertain about their state economic situation, and they're really uncertain about their world economic situation. And so, anything we can do to reach and dig a little deeper and figure this out, and come in and keep things moving, keep repairs happening, keeping upgrades going, but yet, really looking at how we can cut back for the next couple of years. And that's why I say, it would be great to do some projections 10 years out, I think is what we need to do as a council.
Councilor Spear?
I have a budgeting question for the city manager and finance director. We have these stabilization funds for healthcare, leave-of-termination, other types of, one of the costs we're seeing this year, especially in police and schools, I believe, are the vast increases due to step increases, because they've had some turnover and then they've hired newer people. Would it be possible also to have a fund to handle step increases? So, you'd, when a department would get a new position, they'd have to, you'd have actuary, you'll figure it out, but you could have a fund that would say, okay, I know that they're cheap this year, but next year they're going to go up. So, instead, you'd have put into a fund, right? And then you could pay it out, would that work?
Well, the only, the one thing I would say is, the intent for the stabilization fund for leave-of-termination is for it to expire.
True.
Right.
And I would hesitate to bring that up, because steps are all over the place, with teachers, firefighters, police officers. I think that really is legitimately part of the operating budget, because once you start doing that, you then start losing sight as to what, as Councilor Hekmanik said, some of the driving forces. We've still got to go back to the fact that 84% of our operating budget is wages and benefits. So, we need to watch that closely, and if you start doing too much of, you know, the stabilization funds, if you will, I think what you're doing is you sometimes take your eye off of that a little bit. The reason, the main reason the, the stabilization fund was put in place for the leave-of-termination is because of huge spikes that were taking place. For example, somebody decides, four people decide to retire in police, it just blew out their budget. So, that's why. So, I, I would hesitate about doing that, because I think that one then gets too, too far into the operating part of the budget.
I don't want to make it...
Councilor Spear?
I don't want to make it complicated, it's just, I want to get away from, to me, it's a fiction that when you hire someone at the earlier steps, that you're getting a great deal. I mean, you are for that year, but you're also incurring a liability over the next year that their steps go up, and... And I, without, maybe there's another mechanism to admit that, but it has to be admitted in the process that, you know, this is going to be an incurring cost then for the next 10 years, depending on how many steps they have.
We can, we can, we can model it so that people can see what's happening with departments.
Okay.
I mean, modeling it would probably be better. I mean, because, for example, some of the reasons that the school department were able to sustain some of the tough years in the early 2000s was because they had an aging workforce that were retiring. And as those left, newer ones came in, so they were able to absorb some of those costs. And so that's why we're seeing some of these increases now, because as they start to recycle in new employees, and now their steps are starting to creep up again, you're now seeing, they were able to absorb with, with retirements. And so, but we could probably model that a little better, yeah.
Council, Assistant Mayor Cleber.
I just have a question for the assessor. I think I know the answer, but what, what is the average house worth assessed at in Portsmouth?
Single-family home, it's right here. It's 300, well, you might want to.
Three-hundred-and-forty-four thousand is the average. Three-hundred-and-five-seven-nine-four.
Single-family home.
Single-family.
It's right on the chart.
Okay, I didn't, thank you, thank you.
Council Smith.
Thank you. Also, having some of these numbers are great. Do we, how are we doing on an unemployment rate within the city? And? The unemployment rate is at 6.2%. The state's at 7.7. We all know what the national is. And the New England is 9.8. And how's our foreclosure rate? We, no, we virtually don't have any. Good. And I think we also have to keep an eye on, too, and I know we have our, we sit down with our legislative delegation from time to time. We have to be careful, keep a careful eye on what's going on, not only in the county budget, but at the state level, too, as things are changing up there. It's not just about if the, the school formula changes. It's also about whether the LLC tax stays in or not, because that's going to affect small businesses. And then all of a sudden, you might see small businesses pull out of here, which could affect the tax rate, because it's the commercial value of the property. So we have to keep an eye on those things as well. And, you know, who knows what's going to be coming down from Concord for, for other issues, such as, you know, for, with the new healthcare bill that came in place? That's going to affect how Medicare/Medicaid is funded at the state. And we don't know if we're going to get pushed down on those, or it's going to get pushed down to the county level, which, again, that immediately will affect our tax rate. So there's, there's other factors that we have to be, be watchful of, while it's nice to be able to have the stabilization, which I, it seems that we're all, all striving for. Again, it's that way we're providing the services and keeping the watchful eye with the, the, our county delegation and, and state delegation to keep an eye on these things. That's why it's important, while everybody's sitting watching us on Channel 22, hopefully they're also watching what's going on up in Concord as well.
Council Spear. Other, other speakers wish to speak to it, just make sure you let me know.
I usually don't advocate for raising taxes sooner rather than later, but it would be appropriate to raise the sewer rates now, so that, or gradually escalate them now, so that when, when the time comes, we'll have built up some capital that would have us, it wouldn't be a sudden increase, and we'd be able to.
It was something that I proposed back in 99, but didn't go anywhere.
Imagine if we had 10 years' worth of.
That's what I said.
Money, wow. Is it, I, I don't know, am I the only person who's thinking that's a crazy idea?
I think, I think.
You're on the council, then.
We were looking at that, and, and, but what we tried to do, and getting back to, I think, what Council Kenny was getting at, and we'll, we'll provide you the information. We've been trying to be very careful on, when we've had, we try to look at the sewer rate, the water rate, and the tax, the property tax rate. We've been watching that very closely, so that we don't hit one, even, both, two at once. We're trying to be very careful. We had, this year, we're going to have an increase in the water because of a new water plant. We want to be very careful in that regard. So we'll get you that information, and it's something that we probably can look at. And the other thing we're going to look at, and I'm going to go back from what we've heard tonight, I understand where the council's coming from on some things. One of the things we're going to go back and look at is on the capital area, and what statutorily we might be able to do that might be able to set apart capital as a separate entity in terms of taxing. And so I need to talk to the city attorney and the, and the finance director, and I think there might be some enabling legislation. And we need to look at that just before we, but I don't want to get too far into that. I just need to look.
Council Kennedy.
While you're looking things up, I was trying to find where that 2% that you guys used in your sewer treatment plan program, that 2% rule, kind of where, really, basically you stated that you can only, you should only take 2% or could only take 2%. I wasn't sure if it was a legal thing.
EPA.
Or what it was all about. So maybe if you can give me some information where to go locate it.
Yeah, the thing is, it is through EPA, it's affordability, and that's, because that's where you can get.
Yeah.
Relief.
Mm-hmm.
And, but I'll, I'll get you the data on that.
I, I think something like that might be something to really look into, and does, how does that affect this whole equation?
And that will. That's, that's actually going to be the, what we're going to be looking at. We're not trying to avoid implementing secondary treatment. What we will do is maybe, instead of having it here, might come out this longer to do it. And that we would do 2% of median income, and that, that is an administrative relief that can be granted based on that.
Maybe kind of how that looks in the whole project.
Council Dwyer.
I mean, that is an interesting thing, and that's what I was trying to look at with burden, taking, let's, I just assumed the sewer plan, it's 60 million, and taking that 2% Ester so that it isn't a 2.7, but the effective percent on the average household is like a 2.7% when you look at, at current figures. Now, I know that's going forward in the future, so it wouldn't be exactly that. But if you took the 2% and you added it to the burden, if we accepted the full $1.28, then you're at like 11.2% of the income is going to sewer, plus state and local.
And we are making those arguments.
And those are, I mean, that, that I think is terribly important to bring in there, because that, that really dwarfs, you know, the increase we're talking about here. That's like four times the increase we're talking about here. So that, you know, so I don't think what Eric said is crazy at all, but it just might be the timing right now.
Well, whether, whether it's crazy or not, I'll just offer as a follow-on, is there any reason why we shouldn't always be looking at a total tax number? Be it a feat for water and sewer, or be it property tax? They should be on, we should be looking at those. When we're doing our projections going forward, how do we not do that? We have to do that. We can't just look at one and fix that and let the other one. So I think, I think when we look at next year and the year after, and what we're likely to hear from the EPA, I get back to, how far do we get this year? And that's part of stability, too. So.
And a part of the whole, whole tax number is, I know you gave us the revenues, and I understand, but, you know, I kind of, kind of heard a different perspective this week about revenues, an example being parking ticket revenues. We have our police officers spending a lot of time giving people tickets and doing.
Not our police officers.
I mean, our, the parking people.
Yeah.
Giving, giving the tickets and, and whatnot, and also, but also in some cases, police officers are giving tickets. So my question is, is when we look at revenues, are they going to the right sources? Or are we putting revenues, like, for, you know, future parking? Are we putting our, our tickets in there? Isn't that the right, is that the right place to put it? And, and should we start looking at where we're putting our revenues in the future? And really kind of looking at the revenue list and, because I truly believe that we should, if we were truly a public entity, like Jerry always thinks we should get to, then we'd be constantly looking at our revenue source to make sure we were bringing the right revenues and, and, and we're meeting that capacity. And I'm not sure if we are, because I don't know enough about city revenues, but that would be something I would think that we need to look at, also futuristic.
Right. And there's two things about that. First of all, 78% of our revenues are property taxes. So we have 22%. Then another chunk is what's left over from some state. And what you're talking about, I agree 100%. Eventually, we need to get the parking revenues over into the enterprise fund, and so that the users are paying in and they're getting a product back, such as parking. So we're at a point where $2.2 million is in the parking and taking care, over the few years, what we did is we started collapsing all the activities of parking into one department, which is in the budget, and we've slowly started moving the money over. We still have about $1.4 million of the total revenue that stays and resides on the general fund side. And that's about, about 35 cents on the rate. But before, it was more like a dollar. So every, so over time, we started moving that over, and we're going to eventually get there where, when we build a new garage, we've also identified $272,000 in debt service, I think it is, on the parking side, that we want to maintain, because we have the high end over dropping off, but we wanted to maintain the 272 in there, getting to your point. And then eventually, when we go out and do the full garage, and when we now fully bond that garage, we will then move more money over, so they will be self-sustaining. So a lot, so once that new garage is built, we're probably going to get to where, where we need to be over there and have that as an enterprise fund. We'll then, fully, in accordance with governmental accounting standards, fully depreciate on the gap, all those, those facilities, and just like we do with water and sewer. So yeah, we're, we're almost there, about this close. It's a matter of now, once we build the garage, we're going to be there.
I, I think you took me wrong.
Well, okay.
But I liked that, I liked your explanation. What I'm saying is, is that maybe not all that needs to go towards that enterprising fund, but it needs to go towards some more general fund.
That's what it's been doing.
And what I'm, what I'm thinking is, is that we need to look at every revenue source. You know, I was appalled to figure out how much really, all our police officers, again, are writing these tickets, whether they're pullovers, I'm not talking parking tickets.
Let's go to the state.
I realize that.
That's another.
And I was appalled that here we're spending all this money on police officers, really to fortify the state's coffers for all the tickets they are writing, and everything they're doing. So a huge percentage of our police force is day, is writing these tickets, because it's a state law, it goes to the state. And then there's another huge percentage that's grant-funded, that is being federally grant-funded. So, you know, I started thinking of, okay, how much are we fortifying the state, and how much are we really needing for our security? And those are the questions I think we, the big picture questions that we need to start asking about the revenue sources and the revenue side.
Okay, thanks. Any further discussion at this time? With that, we'll, we thank you for your time, patience, and input.
Just one thing, I'd like to have your indulgence send out the agenda on Friday rather than Thursday. With all that's happening this week, I think we'd be better for me, and maybe something might come up Wednesday night where you need to put something in the pack.
Okay, any objections? No objections?